Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. This meeting is livestreamed for the public on Oshkosh Media YouTube channel. It can be found at www.youtube.com/c/oshkoshmedia. Are we in compliance with the open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Carolyn.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Carnes.
Here.
Peschall.
Here.
Solaji.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, next up, I would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite up two Carl Trager Elementary students, Lucy Avalon and Ayesha Akinar Yale. And whenever you are ready, go ahead and start and we'll follow your lead.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Beautiful job.
Lucy, thank you for leading us today in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you want to turn that way and...
Say hi to them.
And Ayesha, thank you for leading us on the Pledge of Allegiance today.
So cute.
You guys are welcome to stay, but if you have other things to do, feel free to go and do those.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a land acknowledgement. As we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Hochunk and the Menominee people who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and the opportunity to share stewardship on these lands. Next up, we have the approval of the agenda. Is there any items that anyone would wish to move around on the agenda at this point? All right, seeing none, we will move on to board administrative reports. Next, the first one is mine. And the, I've been, I have been working with the communities, Oshkosh North Communities Program for a couple of weeks now. They've been working on a project that's called What's in a Name? And it's focusing freshmen and sophomore students in researching the history of Oshkosh names, places, like streets and buildings throughout the community, university, Oshkosh, you know, everything. And they're doing a lot of work. They're doing a lot of work. They're meeting with historians at the university, archivists. They're meeting with librarian, historian, librarians at the library, sorry, I meant the university, and meeting with librarians at the library here in town and at Polk Library. And so I've been part of helping them kind of formulate and ask them questions so that they can dig in and find more information. And it's been very exhilarating watching them just kind of soak it up. I also should acknowledge that Dr. Herzog has been part of this on a couple of days as well. And it's been great because what's going on is that they brought in volunteers, leaders in our community who know a little bit about the history. And then we ask them questions and engage them and find them resources. And this week, it's been, we've been, they've been working on them about their presentations that they're going to make on October 12th. So helping them kind of figure out their hooks, figure out what's gonna, you know, the right thing to say that's going to excite their listener into engaging them and working on the information that it can be delivered in a very factual and exciting manner. So it's been very cool to be part of this and to be engaged with those students. And I wanted to personally invite every single one of you, which I believe you all should have gotten an email this week from a community student, to come to the waters on October 12th. There are kind of two shifts. The first shift starts at 8:30, I think the second shift starts around 10 o'clock or so. I don't know if that's for sure, but it's built around their time. So that's why it's at that time at the waters is because in order for the communities program to work, it's got to work within the school's schedule. And so, and that's the time that they're available to do their presentations. And so they've put a lot of time and effort into it. And so as many people and supporters of students that we can get there would be great. And you know, this event is open to the public and it's at the waters, which is at the end of Washington Avenue along the shores of Lake Winnebago. So it's a great facility to have our kids showcasing the work that they do. That is all I have related to my report.
All right, so the superintendent's good news report for tonight. First, from Jefferson Elementary. Jefferson Elementary understands that relationships matter. Zoe, who's featured here at kindergarten at Jefferson, recently got to have her fingernails painted by her school secretary, Ms. Colwin. Each month, Jefferson's students and staff get together for a school-wide assembly to introduce conscious discipline skills, celebrate, and have fun. Part of the assembly is dedicated to a school-wide drawing where one student is randomly selected and able to choose an incentive tied to building relationships at Jefferson, with the Jefferson staff. They choose from helping a custodian to telling a joke in the principal's weekly video announcements, extra outdoor recess, or, as Zoe picked, enjoy a glam squad fingernail painting. So as we said before, Jefferson is working hard and we're working hard across the district to build those relationships with staff. So congratulations to Zoe and everybody at Jefferson. Carl Trager Art Teachers started off the year with a school-wide collaborative project with their school counselor. Classes read the book More Than Peach and art teachers helped the students find their skin color in crayons, colored pictures, markers, and oil pastels. Or they could make their own crayon for the project. Students learned that when they ask for the skin color crayon, they need to be more specific because skin color can be in a number of beautiful colors. Few talented students, again, at Carl Trager Elementary School exploring their writing skills. Students in the self-contained autism room recently chose their own projects, topics to write on during the week, and then shared it with their classmates. Students were able to write with markers, use letter tiles, or communication devices. When using, when sharing with their peers, they got to sit on the special author chair as they painted as a class. It was great to see students discovering that we can all be authors. So congratulations to those students. Reed Elementary School recently celebrated Thank a Police Officer Day. Students learned how, about how police officers keep us safe. They also made a poster saying, "Thank you for keeping us safe," and added their individual notes of thanks to our police officers. They were excited to present their token of thanks to Detective Wilson of the Oshkosh Police Department when he came to visit the school. Our technology education teacher at South Park Middle School recently embraced a hands-on learning opportunity, making 11 plaques for the United States Navy and learning how to use the school's new CNC router and V-Carve software. This project was a great way for staff to problem-solve and build their own skills so they can be confident in teaching it to students later in the semester. It was also a great way to introduce our current eighth-grade manufacturing and engineering students to what the CNC router is, is capable of, and to be able to see it in action. The Communities One program at Oshkosh North kicked off, as President Peschall said, kicked off the school year with a local history project called What's in a Name? As part of the project, students visited the site they are researching, went to the library to learn more about the area and its past, and talked with local experts. And as was mentioned earlier, there's an event at the waters on October 12th to celebrate the students' learning. And it's homecoming season, so exciting times at our high schools. This week, we're celebrating Oshkosh West's homecoming. I had the pleasure of chatting with the Fuel Wildcats about what homecoming means to them. The entire community is invited out for the homecoming festivities this Friday. West's homecoming parade starts at 5:30 at the school and travels to Titan Stadium. Then you can enjoy a food truck rally and the Oshkosh West versus Appleton North football game kickoff is at 7 o'clock. We, of course, are also looking forward to celebrating Oshkosh North's homecoming next week. And based on some of the planning that's already happened from the start of the school year, I know that's going to be a great event also. So congratulations and thank you to all the students that are involved in that very involved planning process for homecoming to make that a successful event. Again, just a reminder, from a community standpoint, that we'll continue to share our district's COVID-19 plan that can be found on the OESD website. I believe that continuing to work together and acting responsibly to ensure safe in-person learning experience for all of our students. So if you have any questions on that, feel free to contact the district. And then just a list of activities that are done as the school year has got up and running. So it's been great to get out and see everybody. And just a special congratulations again to all of our staff and students on a strong start to the school year. It's certainly been refreshing to have everybody in person and to get off to a, whatever a normal school year is, I think we're back in that rhythm. So congratulations to everyone on a strong start. And that concludes the superintendent's report for tonight.
All right, thank you for your report, Dr. Davis. All right, next, we have district administrator supplemental reports. We have an update related to, a request related to Communication Department staff. So if Miss Neiman would come up and guide us through that, that would be great.
Thank you. Hi, Katie Neiman, Communications Director for the district. This is a follow-up to a few written reports that we've chatted about and that I've taken back and done some additional planning and just strategic outlook for, related to how do we strategically continue to enhance our communication efforts as a district? So the last time that we talked, it was a matter of me, again, just seeking out what has worked for other districts, what's worked best practice. So after having done that research with colleagues here in the state and across the nation, taking a look at the sort of the key accountability or areas of communication that are currently, you know, within my bandwidth, things that are not currently getting the attention that they could, prioritizing that and presenting this option that would be to add a communication and marketing strategist. And just to summarize that, it's really bringing on a storytelling function within the district. So thinking of it as almost an in-house journalist to raise the level of awareness of what's happening in our classrooms and to, so our community can understand that. So some of the initial benefits that that could bring would be, again, just increasing that content, being able to tell our stories and engage with the community in that way. Have this position really focus on enhancing our social media strategy as a district and then also the support that's given to schools and their social media outreach. Enhancing our website. A couple of years ago, we were able to bring on that function, but with any communication function, maintaining it and keeping it current is obviously an ongoing need. And then the next phase of that is just creating bandwidth for me as a communication director to be able to focus strategically of making sure that we're moving forward the strategic plan, goal, priority of building and enhancing our communication and focusing on community engagement as well. So for that side of it, it's, you know, what's that next level of community engagement? How can we focus on the two-way communication, the feedback, and really do that to elevate all of the work that's being done in the district that's happening by our incredibly talented staff and students in classrooms and schools?
Any questions?
I have one question. When you were talking with other people, what is one thing that you were surprised to learn that others were doing that maybe we weren't?
I think one of the interesting things is, as, you know, 10 years ago, communication function wasn't really prevalent in school districts. As that's grown, it's commonplace. And now it's commonplace to have multiple positions within it. And one of the things that I found interesting is now that we're talking to colleagues and especially across the nation, is having a standard communication team of two, three, five is commonplace because they're able to build into, going into the communication channels that their stakeholders are. So you look at engaging in more video storytelling or digital marketing for a school district. And I think that ties into a conversation we have is public education has changed. So how do we take on that business mindset to be, again, telling our story and marketing ourselves? So I think just one thing that resonated a lot was hearing from folks that they initially came, you know, forward with a position that was more of an assistant role, but realized that that bandwidth or the need was more than that. So it's how do you just expand that storytelling capability?
Thank you.
Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for everything you've done in this realm, showing us the possibilities of what it means to have an effective communication director. I often say you can't have enough good communication and good chocolate, not necessarily in that order. But I really appreciate everything you've done and I appreciate the diligence and study that went into your recommendation for this evening. So I look forward to reading those stories from the person who will be coming onboard to assist you in getting out the many positive stories in this district. So thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have other reports. First up, we have an education committee report.
So we met on Tuesday, August 30th, and we're discussing reviewing the board work calendar for 2022 and '23, and updating policy language regarding the assessment of district goals related to the work calendar. So an annual board work calendar for workshops was created, which lines up with our strategic plan. This will assist staff in knowing when reports are coming due, the expectations within those reports, so they can be properly prepared for the workshops and reduce the chance of having additional workshops being dropped into the schedule without full board approval. This lineup also is intentional as to when data is available for presentation on each topic. The schedule will also assist board members by providing an advanced look at when reports are scheduled. So board approval is required to change policies. Therefore, if we add this to the policy and someone wants to add an additional workshop, it would involve board approval to do that. In addition, equity information will be part of each workshop moving forward so the board and community can realize the impact of equity on each strategic goal and how the organization recognizes and addresses it. The policy will be further discussed by the executive team before moving to policy and governance on October 4th. And then will be decided what the next steps are going forward, but looking at an October 26th board meeting to discuss and possibly approve with a target date to start the calendar in November. So it allows us to see exactly when things are coming due and when we're going to talk about them. So I know a lot of us in the community, we get questions. We know, hey, June, we talk about that, November, we talk about that. So it really is a quite nice development to be able to streamline that. Next meeting is Thursday, October 6th.
Thank you. Next report is Facilities and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Peschall. The Facilities and Finance Committee met on August 23rd. We had five members of the public who came and spoke regarding the future of the Merrill Building. We also had several agenda items, one including plans for the Merrill Building. Mr. Nihans noted the need for a large green space for the number of students, approximately 850, who would attend Bell Phillips Middle School. The district's insurance policy would, for liability insurance, strongly encourages not allowing students to use the East Hall Park for outdoor activities during the school day because of the risk in crossing Jackson Street. The district would risk having the insurance policy dropped if the district were to go against the insurance company recommendation. Mr. Nihans also reported on the district's Human Resources Department and Business Department researching different resources to make for a smoother transition and to automate many of the less automated systems between those two offices. And the recommendation was to go with Power School. West Turf Project was also on the agenda. Mr. Nihans reported on the potential of West High Sports Field Project, including improvements to the inside of the track with turf lights and a new press box. The district does have the funds for this in Fund 46. If approved, the goal is to have the project completed this calendar year. Mr. Nihans also talked about a couple of community partnerships. The district has entered into a purchasing agreement with Lowe's in an effort to create a more streamlined method of obtaining supplies where the district can order online and rather than have the staff spend a lot of time leaving the workplace to find needed items. The district also has entered into an agreement with Ambassador Travel to schedule any travel and overnight or all travel arrangements for staff. I'm trying to paraphrase this and not read every word on this page because it's long. The Food Service National Lunch Program was one of great interest at this meeting. Our Food Services Director, Michelle Stammen, and Mr. Howard reported on the Community Eligibility Provision Program that is operated under the National School Breakfast and National School Lunch Programs. It provides schools that are in high-poverty areas with free breakfasts and lunches to all students in that district as long as the school has at least a 40% rate of free and reduced qualifiers. Forms would still be required for the snack, milk, and school fees to be waived. And we also met on September 15th. We had four people attend our open forum, all speaking in regard to the Merrill Building. There were several agenda items then that followed. One was reviewing the process of naming the new elementary school, which will be on Hazel Street. Well, I don't know if that will be the address, but it'll be in that vicinity of the current Webster Building. So we talked about various approaches to soliciting community input, knowing that ultimately the decision to come up with the name according to board policy rests with the board. There was an update on the Merrill School property. Mr. Nihans and Mr. Considine from Ray Architects had looked into various options to save any and/or all of the facade of the building while having a regulation-sized track. It was determined that there was no logical way to save part of or even the facade of the building. The committee was reminded that the district will be down to three middle schools and would not be able to have inter-district track meets without a regulation-sized track. Middle school students currently use the high school tracks, which means the high schools don't have those facilities. And many of our middle school track students then have to practice things like the high jump, long jump hurdles in parking lots or in family driveways. We learned that as well. The district eventually would like to have one regulation-sized track to serve the middle schools on the west side and then have the one on the north side for those students at Bell Phillips. Sheldon Nature Area, let's see. The district has been working with the Wisconsin DNR for recommendations on how to best address the green ash borer, which has infected most of the trees on that site. The district has approved turning the nature area into a school forest. There will be a community meeting on October 18th with the district, the DNR, and individuals from the neighborhood to discuss how and why decisions were made regarding the elimination of the diseased trees and answer questions. Mr. Helnberg from the Rec Department highlighted some of the summer programs. There was a wide variety of programs that attracted good numbers of students and adults. Currently, there are ongoing discussions regarding renovating the Oshkosh Recreation Department gym with side hoops, installing an upper shelf for bands at the auditorium, improving marketing of the recreation department, and a new website and an e-newsletter, which has increased the number of community members who have received the program information by 42%. Mr. Nihans was busy at this meeting. He also gave us information on stop-loss renewals and made a recommendation to bring a proposal to the board, which we will be voting on this evening, to contract with, let's see, a new carrier for our stop-loss renewals. So that is on our agenda for this evening. And those were the two reports for the Facilities and Finance Committee. Our next committee meeting will be October 18th at 1:30.
Can I ask a question of others?
You may.
Sure.
You had a lot to read, so I just want to make sure. You mentioned that the turf field would be completed this calendar year. I think that was for next calendar year. Is that correct?
It could be. We may need to edit the minutes for that. Thank you for catching that. Appreciate that.
Okay. Next up is a report from the Legislative Committee.
Poor Dr. Herzog doesn't get a break tonight.
Okay. Well, I was the chair of the meeting, filling in for the very capable Mrs. Carlin. So we talked about the voucher impact. And Mr. Davis provided us with a draft document with a visual representation of the impact of the vouchers, school program since the 2016-2017 school year. Most of the students in this program are elementary, and there has been an increase in enrollment. As a result, the impact on our school budget is $4 million, the taxpayer money is directed to these voucher programs. The committee recommended adding information about headcount. The application process is only once, and that reimbursement to private schools is actually greater than the tuition that is charged. A recommendation was to reach out to the Oshkosh Herald for an upcoming news article once our budget has been finalized and this document has been finalized. And Dr. Davis would like to include details on how income limits and how students qualify for vouchers. We also talked about advocacy about per pupil revenue increases. Mr. Nihans explained that over a 12-year period, the district has received a total of $35 per student, a student increase. The district cannot tax above this because it's an operational referendum, and this amount does not keep up with inflation. The CPI or Consumer Price Index for next year is expected to go up 9%, but only a three-and-a-half percent increase is projected in funds during that period. This makes it difficult to forecast ahead without a long-term commitment from the state We have an increase in our community of people living in poverty, which means that some students are coming to school less prepared. And then we've also noted that there are increases in students who bring their social and emotional issues to school. And we want to do our best to address those, and that costs money usually. Dr. Davis addressed the issue of special education funding. The legislature, or the state, rather, has funds of at least $5 billion in a surplus. This is what has already been collected in taxes. Every district in the state would benefit from an increase in the special education reimbursement rate, which is currently 30%. And the goal is to get that to 45%, which would be roughly $4 million, or roughly the would be roughly $4 million, or roughly the amount that currently goes to the voucher schools in our community. Again, I'm trying to paraphrase this. Those of you who want to read the complete document can find it on our website. That's the gist of the special ed one. Essentially, it benefits every district and every child in every district because now monies have to be taken from the general fund to support the special needs students. We're happy to do that, but it means a reduction in overall dollars for all students. The committee was happy with the one-page documents that were created for getting the word out on talking points on various issues regarding the district and finances, among other things. We also reviewed a presentation on budget transparency with Dr. Davis, Mr. Nihans, and Mrs. Niemann. This is a work in progress. There's going to be a projection on the mil rate on the third Friday enrollment voucher information and sharing information about the draft document spoken about earlier, as well as talking points on ESER funds and the transition to ESER III. Again, the emphasis is on transparency and communicating with various groups in the community, including parents, service clubs, League of Women Voters, retired educators, staff members, and so on. The idea is to share these documents once finalized with those groups, as well as at the CISA VI Legislative Breakfast. Meetings will be scheduled with local legislators and candidates for the upcoming election with talking points to advocate for public education and specifically Oshkosh. And the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 27th at 8:00 in the morning. Thank you. I'm sorry that was so long, but I was doing my best to paraphrase.
You did a great job. Thank you.
Sometimes there's lots of work being done. It's okay to talk about it. Next up, we have the Policy and Governance Committee.
Thank you, President Preschel. The Policy and Governance Committee met on Tuesday, September 6th, and we talked a lot about recording our meetings and how policy pertains to recording our meetings because we always want to be cognizant of getting information to the public in the best way that we can. So we had Dr. Gunlock make contact with Oshkosh Media about the possibility of broadcasting committee meetings, similar to what they do for board meetings, and we found out that they do not have the capacity with limited staff to do that right now. Furthermore, issues with closed captioning would require between two to three grand in additional equipment upgrades for us to be able to record all of our committee meetings. In addition to that, we reviewed how many hits we had on other committee meetings that were recorded, an example being Facilities 2.0, and we found that those hits, you know, weren't substantial. So basically, we decided that we're going to keep looking at ways to be more transparent, and we're going to keep monitoring it. However, at this time, the committee recommended no changes to those policies. So that was a large chunk of our committee meeting. We also reviewed Policy 0155.5, and the committee recommended adding the superintendent and other board members shall be non-voting ex-official members of the committee to be present with all other committee policies. We reviewed Policy 155.7, which was similar to that. And then we reviewed Policy 5410, Promotion, Placement, and Retention, so that in accordance with state laws, specific criteria for promotion from 4th to 5th grade and from 8th to 9th grade are listed, along with the option for additional criteria specified by the district. This revision is required for compliance, and then we were provided with an explanation for that. So that is going to, actually, Policy 155.5 will be included in our packet tonight that we'll be voting on, and Policy 155.7, along with Policy 5410. So thank you for the time, and that's where we're at with that stuff.
So thank you to all of you for putting in the time and effort, as well as administrators in making these committees work. So it's great work. Sometimes it's slowly, but surely we get there, and this is kind of proof of that. So thank you for that. Next, we have a non-agenda-related public forum. So we do have someone signed up for both, non-agenda and public forum, and so I'm just going to read the guidelines that relate to the public forum. When addressing the board, one, please clearly state your name and full address and the topic you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson of a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Number two, please clearly state clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Three, please limit your comments to three minutes. Four, please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel, titles, or identifiable descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 920-424-0160 to be directed to the appropriate administrator. All right. So I'd like to invite up Ms. Jean Erdman to the public forum table.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good to have you here.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Jean Erdman. I'm a parent of children who are now adults, who went through the district. I live at 415 South Meadow Street, and I'd like to talk about the current location of Merrill Elementary and Middle School and why it should be a physical education and green play area for children and youth. Background: The district is consolidating schools to provide a stronger education at a cost-effective manner. Teachers can reduce windshield time by being at one school all day and can be available to students as needed. More education for less cost, but more education must include equity in terms of physical education space. It has to be up to code, and there must be green space. I have five points. I'll be brief, and then I have a six-line conclusion. The building is worn out. Floors creak noisily. The former kindergarten room near New York and Kentucky has two levels so that there's steps going up and down all the time, making you nuts as a teacher in terms of whether or not kids are going to trip. Classrooms are mostly too small. Woodwork is beat up. Some classrooms look out on rooftops with very little greenery. The basement is partially left over, not from old Merrill, but from old, old Merrill because when they built this old school, they didn't take all of the other basement out. They worked around it. Okay? Some townspeople genuinely appreciate the outside architecture along New York. The yard signs to save Merrill School bring out nostalgia. Nostalgia is an overemphasis on the past, remembering things as perhaps much nicer than they actually were. For decades, children in this building have had trouble hearing due to very creaky floors. They have been overcrowded. I was a supervisor of student teachers at Merrill for three decades, and sometimes I had to sit in a middle schooler's desk because there was no room. Children in the district deserve equity, and that means space, green space and space for physical education. Number three, developers and others are looking to make money for themselves. This is perfectly fine, very legal, by either getting work or hiring others, but it is also an unacknowledged conflict of interest when they talk about the beauty of the school and they don't talk about the fact that they're also going to probably be making money. Developers have a history in Oshkosh of coming back to the city for more money after a project effective they've already gotten money. This is also very legal, and it must be acknowledged that it's happening and that there's a benefit to it for some people and that it's legal. Retaining the old school for housing would not allow up-to-code physical education space and space for intermurals. This is necessary for equity. Equity is a key principle of the district. One of the reasons for building a new school is for equity. Increasing population density is not a good idea in this neighborhood. It is already one of the densest areas in town with the littlest green space. You have to go all the way to Hazel, which is about a mile, all the way to really across the river, except for a teeny-tiny, little-bitty pocket park by Bent Avenue, and green space and play space is needed. I found a park, I went to Madison this last week, and I found a pocket park that I think would fit in about 20 feet deep, and I took a lot of pictures, and I'm going to share them with the district. I will drop them off sometime soon. Okay? This is an opportunity to improve the parkland for all of the north central side of Oshkosh. Conclusion: I run a volunteer free clothing closet at Merrill. I was a playground director there in the mid-'70s. It's advantage of being older. I supervised student teachers there in both the middle and the elementary for 30 years. In sum, the building is beat. The children need recreation. The neighborhood needs green space, and so for the developers, I would say there's something for you here, too. Focus on development at Washington School, where there won't be a conflict with recreation and there won't be a conflict with green space. They have Stevens Park, and they have Menominee Park, and who knows? There might even be room for housing and a pocket park there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Erdman, for your insights. Question for you. You also signed up for the agenda-related?
It's because I didn't know whether it was an agenda or not.
Sounds great. Thank you. Appreciate your time. All right. So there is no one that has signed up for the agenda-related public forum, and so we will forego that portion of the agenda and move on to the consent agenda, consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted on with one vote without discussion.
So move.
Second.
Do you guys want me to read it?
No.
No? All right. Can someone waive the reading then, please?
I move to waive the reading.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. So then, with that, please call the roll.
Are we calling the roll right now for waiving?
Yes, please. Please call the roll on the waiving of the reading.
Herzog.
Aye.
Karins.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Motion carries to waive the reading.
Thank you. Please call the roll on the consent agenda, please.
Karins.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
All right. Thank you. Is there, there are no individually considered resolutions? Any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to announcements. So I have an announcement. Give me a second to kind of bring it up. So my announcement is kind of built in in the sense that I've been doing some personal development professionally and have been seeking employment, and so I have successfully accepted a position that leads me to resign from elected office, no matter what the office is. So, yeah, so my announcement is that I'm resigning from the Oshkosh School District Board of Education at the adjournment of this meeting. I've accepted a position with Disability Rights Wisconsin where I will be part of leading the strategic fundraising elements and communication elements of the organization. Disability Rights Wisconsin is the leading nonprofit organization that provides advocacy for persons with disabilities. Quite often, DRW or Disability Rights Wisconsin will litigate with school districts, municipalities, and counties representing the needs of persons with disabilities. My capacity as an elected leader will create a conflict, a clear conflict of interest. So as much as I enjoy my role as a member of the Board of Education, the opportunity to improve the lives of persons with disabilities has been at the heart of my professional path well before I ever served the community as an elected official. My almost six years on the board has been very thought-provoking, challenging, and inspiring. So it's provided me the opportunity to build strategic paths with 10 unique board members over the time of that almost six years, three different superintendents and their teams, and to interact with thousands of children, hundreds of staff, and the broader community that represents the Oshkosh Area School District. So I'm not out of it. I'll still be engaged in our community. I just won't be engaged as an elected leader. So I will seek avenues as I get my foundation reset in my new professional path to reengage in areas that are supportive to the growth of our community. So thank you for appointing me as your president for the last year and a half. It has been a great opportunity. I've learned a great deal from all of you and Dr. Davis and the team and staff, and especially the children. So, community, Oshkosh Area School District community, thank you for allowing me to serve you. It's been a great pleasure. So thank you. So.
We wish you all the best.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks, Bob, for your service. We know this has been a difficult time, you know, just in your service in the board and specifically, you know, the presidency, and, yeah, just wish you all the best, but thanks for your service, and we'll know where to find you as we are looking for, you know, some of that insight. So thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I don't know if it's appropriate now to talk about a little, like, just guidance moving forward.
I think that's a good idea.
How our policies really lay out how we would move forward. So there's really three areas that we would want to look at from a policy standpoint. First of all, you know, filling the position of president will be important. So in Policy 0171.2, which references the Office of the Vice President, letter C says succeeding to the Office of the President in case of vacancy in the Office of the President for the balance of the unexpired term. So by policy, technically, it would be the Vice President, so Dr. Herzog, to be moving into the presidency for the remainder of the term per policy. That then would lead to the open seat of the Vice Presidency, to which I would recommend that the board come back in October to look at a similar reorganization process that we would do in April for our officers, but specifically to fill the Vice Presidency. And then if there's other offices that are vacated, by filling the Vice Presidency, there'd be a reorganization, knowing that we have the presidency in place, but just reorganization with the other officers. I think doing that in October would be an appropriate move. And then the final move then would be regarding filling vacancies, the vacancy that's left with the board, so having six members. So looking at Policy 0142.5 outlines a description of how the school board would fill vacancies. So, and it's very explicit about the application process, the timeline. We would shoot for 60 days, 60-day process from today to be able to work through that.
We know this has been a difficult time, you know, just in your service in the board and specifically, you know, the presidency, and, yeah, just wish you all the best, but thanks for your service, and we'll know where to find you as we are looking for, you know, some of that insight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I don't know if it's appropriate now to talk about a little, like, just guidance moving forward?
I think that's a good idea.
How our policies really lay out how we would move forward. So there's really three areas that we would want to look at from a policy standpoint. First of all, you know, filling the position of president will be important. So in Policy 0171.2, which references the Office of the Vice President, letter C says succeeding to the Office of the President in case of vacancy in the Office of the President for the balance of the unexpired term. So by policy, technically, it would be the Vice President, so Dr. Herzog, to be moving into the presidency for the remainder of the term, per policy. That then would lead to the open seat of the Vice Presidency, to which I would recommend that the board come back in October to look at a similar reorganization process that we would do in April for our officers, but specifically to fill the Vice Presidency, and then if there's other offices that are vacated, by filling the Vice Presidency, there'd be a reorganization, knowing that we have the presidency in place, but just reorganization with the other officers. I think doing that in October would be an appropriate move. And then the final move then would be regarding filling vacancies, the vacancy that's left with the board, so having six members. So looking at Policy 0142.5 outlines a description of how the school board would fill vacancies. So, and it's very explicit about the application process, the timeline. We would shoot for sixty days, sixty-day process from today to be able to work through that. So again, we would hope to have somebody, you know, appointed to the board by around Thanksgiving time within that sixty-day window, and we have a process that we've used in the past and that the policy can govern, which would really open up applications for anybody in the community to apply to be part of the board. The board, remaining board, would review those applications, would hold interviews, and then this board would make an appointment. That appointment would serve then in this role, in Bob's role as likely a member-at-large through the end of his term, which would be through April, and that person then would need, if that person who is appointed is interested in running for the board or serving beyond April, then they would need to put their name as a candidate to be elected on the ballot. So that replacement would just be for this term through April. So just wanted to be able to provide some of that guidance. You know, it's all laid out by policy. That's what we'll follow. I just wanted to offer some guidance for the community, knowing that, you know, we're certainly sad to see Bob go and wish him well, but that we also have some direction as we're moving forward, so.
Any questions for Dr. Davis related to that process or procedures?
Well, I kind of do have, I have a million questions, but I'm trying to prioritize them. I guess if we do know people that want to apply, it's just, it's not, it's more than just an application, right? There's an application, there'll be an interview.
Yeah, and all of that is laid out in our vacancies policy. So I would just refer to anybody that has questions regarding the, you know, filling of the vacancy. It is, and we can post this on our website also, just as FYI, but it's 0142.5 vacancies, and that lays out the process, and we'll follow the process of the policy. So I would just refer people to that as we go. But it's a wide-open process, so anybody in the community that's interested and eligible can apply.
Excellent. Thank you. And then I'd also just like to thank Mr. Peschel for his leadership and his service to our board. He's done an outstanding job the past few years, and it's been a pleasure to serve three superintendents with you and multiple job searches, and you're going to be missed. So thank you very much, and best of luck to you in your new role.
Thank you.
Our loss is definitely their gain, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Sed.
All right. So next, we will move to adjourn to executive session. Executive session deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent C. A, discuss potential purchase of properties.
So, second.
Moved by Herzog, seconded by Carlin. Please call the roll to adjourn to executive session.
Peschel.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Karins.
Aye.
We are adjourned to executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.